...for everyone. With that, we'll say pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call Murphy, Sister Price, Auburn, is that, and assuming fire related duty, and uh.
Yes.
Uh, look at, we need a motion to approve the meeting, uh, meeting for the minutes, minutes for the meeting of the June thirty twenty twenty four.
After coming, motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Price?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Murphy?
Yes.
Murphy, uh, minutes approved. The second item is a motion to approve the claims that represented in the July twenty twenty four. This is the first.
Yes. I did just have one thought in reviewing the claims where it says the net payroll. It seems like our audio at a couple of meetings will ask that we have itemized lists of the payroll. And so I'm gonna ask that we, in the future, that the net, that the payroll is all itemized for the council members and, but otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second your recommendation.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Miller?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Price?
Yes.
Okay. We have other public comment if we have any at this point. If not, we'll move on. The first item of new business would be Blake with J E O. to review and update and help us with their one to six year plans.
Hi, Blake Eisen. Does everyone have a copy card? Perfect. Have extras if not. Yeah, so just overall introduce myself, Blake Eisen with J E O. I've been with J E O. For eight years, for seven years. Steve Fars, they appointed a street superintendent, but I'm helping him out. I have a class A or D license, I can't think it's class B license, you gotta keep it for so many years to class A to be able to be appointed as a street superintendent. So just here to kinda go over the new communities that I'm not familiar with, I like to give a road program while you do it, one in six, the requirement for to receive highway allocation funds from the state. Point the street superintendent, I didn't bring a packet for you Donna, but I'll give you one to you. Just break that, breaks down the road program, kinda what I'm saying today, and then any questions that come there. So you receive the highway allocation funds, it's all based on your vehicle tax, fuel tax, vehicle registrations. So obviously the more people you have in town, or the more people that are driving through town, more maintenance needed for your roads, so the more money that the state will provide. I have the projection for the year is just shy of a hundred and twenty thousand. Monthly payments have been coming in as a hundred and eighteen, three sixty nine, it's on Nebraska DOT's website for anybody to view. So I'm opening up to comments, questions, one year plan, looks like Fifth, Fifth Street is kind of included on that, and on south of Iowa here, doing some construction this year, this year, so whenever, was it asphalt before?
Which one, Fifth Street?
Yeah.
Concrete.
Okay.
Now, we're not, we're not doing on the south side of Iowa, twelve on Fifth Street, that's still the same, what we got?
Yep, yep, just from Harold or the highway to Iowa.
His question is, was it asphalt before?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so next year's layman report, we'll just need to update, update that one, next year can we receive that to move it to concrete?
So we can take that Fifth Street north of Highway twelve off the, off the plan, that's that's already job, gonna be done.
Correct, yep, we'll take it off. Perfect.
So we need to keep south of Highway twelve on Fifth Street, that's still these people in the plan.
Yep, perfect.
When you draw up your plan, what, what criteria do you use to say what streets are worse and which ones are better?
Uh, I haven't inherited this from, from Tennessee, so it's Steve Fars. I don't know if Steve Fars has come up and met recently within the past years or not, but to, to, for those, I know he's come up for maybe an opinion to cost and stuff.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Yep, so that's, that's where it's perfect to, to review it now. Changes, we'll make changes, typically send them back as the end of the month, July thirty first that way, and then in September, at September's meeting, someone to kinda recommend during the public hearing, adopt the annual budget, is when we would recommend to adopt the, the new one in six or the current.
We are in the process, or have you noticed that we are filling the lot over the four streets and we've got.
Yep, and that's, that's under normal maintenance, um, kinda some of these projects that are on here are bigger, bigger scale, not just your normal maintenance, or your, even, I mean, chip, chip seal and stuff that could be included on here if going in. But, yeah, I guess any, any comments to it, sound like there's some questions of why, why some of these streets were, I'm guessing probably years ago, a couple of years, that it's decided this is kind of where we wanna steer, to, you know, this street maybe one year, wait a couple of years, do another street another year, and then what the goal is, whether it's gonna be, since I know some of these on here are probably concrete, but the top layer is asphalt. Do you wanna do a chip seal on some of the roads to get rid of some of those irregularities, or go for a full reconstruct? Obviously a full reconstruct is gonna be a little more pricey with.
I got a question.
Yep.
Over here, Fifth. Fifth Street's up, we'll, we'll be talking about that, and one on Second Street, probably most heavy traffic with semis and heavy equipment.
On Second?
Those two are most heavy traffic, and because that, that's where the rain comes in, that's where the, the hay comes in.
Right.
So those two streets, I think, are the most heavy traffic area. Another one is over by, uh, King, it's right over here on Iowa Street, night, night south of, uh, Main Street, artists. The street is on here. Second Street, second street.
It's not identified up here as anything.
Correct.
It has a.
That's along Second Street, same.
It's just right over here.
Okay.
Second Street East on Second.
Okay.
That door. That intersection is not, the street does not mark, it's blue going.
It's going out, yeah.
Yeah.
That's that right there. So we got three major streets that take up a lot of heavy equipment.
Just mind if I, can we confirm this one? Okay.
Yep, it's right here, it's not even marked, it's here's Iowa Street, right, second Iowa, right here.
Okay.
That word, but I would say, I don't know where it's a constant, but I would say those three with the heavy traffic with semis and big foot.
Which would probably, I mean, if the project were to spur up, it'd probably be more full reconstruct, I would assume, I haven't looked at that one, um, but to take the load of those heavy traffic, the heavy trucks, heavy traffic, it's probably better to put down the concrete, at least eight inch, if not, I mean, it depends how heavy the traffic actually is. We get big, big semis on it all, all day, every day.
But you could use that. We could use.
Yep.
And that's a safety.
If I should carry all three of those.
Yeah, thickness is probably gonna be the.
Eight.
Yeah. That's pretty, pretty strict, so, yeah. Yeah, we can add that one, um, add that one on here, probably concrete.
From a guy, any other that you're looking at the streets that can be addressed, honestly?
Or, or some removed from.
So these are not written in stone, this is like.
Correct.
Guides of the week, and the, the allocation of funds, and we can, as a council, decide what's the priority.
All right. So if it's, it's not saying that, well, your one year plan number seventeen and twelve, you're, you're gonna do in next year, or, let's say the one on Iowa Street from second to first, we put that on as a six year, and you do it within one year, that's acceptable, we just have to make a revision and send it into the state. If it's, if there's a street that's not on here that we happen to do, it's a way that you're telling the state that, because your highway allocation funds have to be used for street related projects, whether it's three dip streets, normal maintenance, sidewalks, any of your drains that comes out your streets, any over clean that water comes out your streets, there's, there's a, there's a big list, um, that you can do this for.
So another one here is up by the bank, and I, I thought we, Jay and Jim, uh, in front of the bank, that's all, that's all concrete, there isn't no asphalt.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't, it don't get, it is not bad.
Right.
Compared to some of our other streets in town. Unless you guys.
And that was, that was on this list?
Just a block up here, going from second to first street on that Kansas Street.
Okay.
I agree with what you're saying about that heavy traffic and semis, but on Sixth Street, just on the other, you know, we're redoing the road from the, between the elementary school and church, but that Sixth Street on the other side of the preschool, and that, although there's not semis driving.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of traffic driving on there, when very strong kids on the school.
And nothing, you don't even look at fighting the street there, because like you said, half of the elementary school population, it doesn't get on the bus, leaves after, right there, it's, it's, it's dangerous.
And I think, if that road was a better road, more people would use that road and take some of the traffic.
Correct, yeah.
Plus area.
Correct, three hundred percent, that's a concern we talked about.
We could take, we could take that there, like, in front of the bank, make that off the list and put Sixth Street on, because I'm kinda looking at some of these streets like that.
You could take all these off the list.
Yeah, if you have some.
We're gonna do one, kinda do one here, take care of the event, so many others, probably a line, everybody part of it, plus one in your, who is okay.
It's gotten a lot better with our pop.
I know, I actually said it still.
Okay, I have a question about this one. So this TV and pay, is that for this road right out here in front of the fire hall?
Well, Jason was supposed to present it tonight, we'll get your, we'll get that to the.
Is that this on Iowa Street though, that's on here, right?
From the east side of the ambulance to the west side of the fire.
Yes, that's it.
That gets up to beyond that, keep it, just, just right here, build up to the corner, because Jason was going, Jason was going to put a new approach upon the fire.
When something does street construction, that's where that conversation will be, right?
Yeah.
We don't need it here.
That's probably number thirteen, that's, yeah, this is Iowa. Which is my whole two blocks instead of the one.
So if we go ahead and do this, what Jason was gonna present tonight, then we can just take that off.
Right. I was not set. They all come on here, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, nineteenth, nineteenth, twenty, twenty-one. Perfect, I like that, I like a good plan.
Well, I mean, we gotta give you the list and put on for the next.
Yeah.
The goal, that's what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Put down on this thing.
So do we have a plan to reassure that we're not gonna lose our highway allocation? Now, how many more streets we need to put on here that?
No, you could put zero on there, just put normal maintenance technically.
There's no request.
There's no requirement, but if, if you do a project, you need to put in a resolution set for the state. So if something does come up, and you do a project, it's nice, yeah, it's nice to have it on here for even the board to kinda have a plan of like, okay, which streets do actually need it, like you're saying, sixteen, fourteen, eighteen, let's take those all off, we actually wanna do Sixth Street within the next six years type, type deal. At least gives you a gauge of, kind of where you, where you wanna go, which roads, so, yeah, I guess is there, kind of a, I guess how would you, how do you want me to go about this in terms of one year? And then.
I need a one year plan, really good, top two, three, four, five, series ones.
Right, that's always the, always the challenge of course.
Yes.
And we, we know what's great for you. Yeah. We know what's.
So we wanna prioritize that Sixth Street.
Oh, quite often.
Okay, and then goes after that, then those, uh, heavy streets, heavy traffic, up to that, you wanna five year planner?
Could you actually, why don't we follow that? It's like, we need a little, because those, those streets aren't falling apart.
Not bad, but I'm probably a few, a few in that.
Oh, this one over here?
Yeah, we could put that one on.
This one goes, outside of this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Has.
I have a, I did, I did. And then, but do you want more, more to the, more to the. Right. Yeah. Yeah, so I'll remove, we may do remove a couple of these, thirteen. Uh, do you guys have any comments, like eleven, sixteen, fourteen, eighteen, they're all kinda on the right side of, or the east side of, of town? Keep them on, I would say it doesn't matter, it kinda doesn't matter if you're, not gonna actually do it in six years, so it just kinda gets better than, prioritizing the streets. Requirement from the state as well, so we can get a couple of those added on there. If something comes up where you're like, man, we really wanna do a street, we have money for it, how much will it cost, reach out, uh, we'll, we can put together, pay the cost, that way at least have major rough numbers on, on what it will cost. Perfect. That would be in September. Okay, no motion today, just an open discussion of, uh, any revisions, any changes, that way we can give a change, send back if, if before the end of month. Yeah, it's like, particularly in September is only gonna do, adopting it. Send down, I'll send you, I'll send you that document, I forgot to bring it. So questions, you can always reach out to me.
You'll send us.
Do you have one we need to do, so just kind of. I can? Thank you. Add it to my calendar. All right. It's the easiest way. Here's my card. Yep. If any other questions, uh, I'm just gonna drag around a little bit more, and put a couple of things that you pointed out.
Hold that later on. There it is.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Okay, so, the boxes, and we should be, sure there, the highway, all, okay, the next item would be, um, is a discussion about five rules we have in your package, a little brief, under Dr. Green, five rule and what they are planning to do for us, and we have been doing before, and over that Bobby Pettit is here from, owner and operator and manager of Five Rules, we can discuss Five Rules and its implications for us in the never city moving forward.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
I'm Logan. Um, I'm towards, I think it's the audio, putting me on, my name's Bobby Pettit, and I am a community planner, and I own Five Rule Planning, we are a community and economic development consulting firm, and I live in Kearney, and I have one other full time employee that is in Kearney, and then Lowell Schroder, um, who's from Knox County, and lives in Stanton, is also on our team. Um, I started out doing work, just, um, just in planning work for communities, so we focus on communities, um, five hundred to five thousands. Um, I grew up in Myrna, Nebraska, most folks with mine that go to school for what I went to school for, to be a planner, go more in the urban field, but, um, our mission is really to focus on bringing like, um, projects back to rural Nebraska and rural Kansas, um, especially in communities about the size of Crofton, um, where you just don't, you have the ability to do projects, but you don't have the staff all the time, um, to see it through, so that's what we do. Um, I got, I got mixed up with, got involved with Knox County, probably because of Lowell, because, uh, Bloomfield is his hometown, so, um, I met Lowell Schroder, uh, roughly fifteen years ago now, um, he was with Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, and at the time, I worked at South Central Economic Development District in central Nebraska, and, um, we partnered on a lot of projects together. So when I started, um, Five Rule Planning in twenty eighteen, I knew eventually, sooner or later, I would want to be, I would want Lowell to be on my team, and so he joined, um, the team in twenty twenty-one, and then, um, I guess probably because of those connections here, we started doing more work in Knox County. Um, so then Kelly Handby wanted to try and experiment, and, um, we had a, we have a long term contract with the city of Bloomfield right now, to be, um, it's like, we do planning and zoning, we do economic development, and we do some, I don't like to say grant writing, I try to stay away from grant writing, um, it's really more about project development, when you're building a project, and then figuring out what external sources of funding are out there once you, once the project's ready to go, so, um, but that is something that we do, so, um, starting about three years ago, this holding was the first community that we started with, and then Bloomfield has also come on board, where we don't just do planning work for you, we don't just do like, your comprehensive plan, your zoning regulations, or housing study, but we sit with you to, um, see projects through. So, uh, Kelly Handby caught wind, um, of Bloomfield being a client of ours, and so, um, she wanted to, um, experiment again with us having like a long term contract with Knox County Economic Development, and, um, it went on for six months, and I felt like it was pretty successful. I don't, I don't love to do regional contracts, because sooner or later, somebody always feels like they're not getting as much service as another community, but where Kelly was our main point of contact, um, I feel like it was working, so in that, in those short six months, um, we applied for a couple of big housing projects on behalf of Niobrara and Burt Green, um, got Niobrara, started down the path of getting their LBA forty program in place, and then I was in Crofton, um, twice, um, visiting the community foundation, and then lead a transglances workshop, which, thank you for bringing us on, I generated some surveys based on that, off that workshop. Um, but then we found out last month that Knox County was not going to retain our contracts, um, funding misunderstanding or issue, I'm not sure, maybe it's on higher stack, so as of June thirty, as we're not working in Knox County anymore. Um, Bloomfield is gonna continue to be a client, so, um, I visited Bob, um, several times, and, um, I felt like, I felt sad about the Knox County contract, because Crofton was especially one community where I felt like we were just hitting start it, so, um, I hated, I hated to walk away from Crofton, um, and so I met with Bob and Donna a couple weeks ago, and asked if I could, um, give you guys a proposal letter to have a similar relationship with you that you have with Bloomfield, and so that is, um, what you have before you. So, um, our contracts are fairly, they are, they're not small, so what I'm proposing is thirty-two thousand dollars a year, and then we bill that quarterly. Um, we have a scope of work that we work off of, and then when we invoice you, either myself or Lowell would come give an in person report, and then you'd also get a copy of our timesheets, and then we give you, um, an update and write. Um, the reason that I charge, the rates that I charge are that, um, from working, uh, on a regional level for so many years, I feel like you, if we spread ourselves too thin, we try to do too much, and we don't get anything done, and so, um, I keep my rates fairly high so that I don't have to spend a lot of time drumming up work, we get, we spend the time we have working for the customers that we have, and I don't, um, the first couple of years that I was in business as a consultant, just doing the annual contracts or short term contracts, is one part of my mind was always spinning, wondering about what was the next, what was the next contract I was gonna be able to line up, and so I didn't feel like I was really giving the community my full attention. So, um, if you were to consider, if you wanted to join with us, um, you would, I think you would be like the sixth community, um, that we do this kind of work for, so, I've been talking for a while now, I'll just give you a chance to ask any questions.
So you guys are not a grant writer?
Well, we write grants, um, so I am not a certified community development law grant writer, but Lowell is, and then Doug Christensen on my team is, but, so we will apply for grants, um, and we will go after grants on your behalf, but we, I really try to watch the way I say that, because, um, I don't like to be part of a project where, um, I'm working with a community, and we go find a grant, so then we try to create a project to match up the grant, so instead of saying grant writer, I say project developer, so, and that's Lowell's main department.
And we did have a meeting with Lowell, uh, right there.
In here?
And with Aaron, uh, Aaron Phillips, because we have a project, our pool is our project, you know, we have the hours and hours, a lot of people, to devote a lot of time to get this all in alignment, so we have that project, and Lowell helped us find, or assist in the process, help them find and make it all work, the grant, which would be upwards of three, five, a hundred thousand dollars to match. Now, nothing written in stone, but he has the tools to put it all together, and this is the circumstance where if this comes to fruition, you know, at thirty-two thousand dollars, we could, one year, with the grant, you know, and we would, or Graham would have enough resources to pay fifteen years of their salary, so that's, that's a perfect win scenario, and, and they did that, I would say if they had been funding, owed it, I would, you know, contractual obligation, I suppose, to like, this, and, but they, knowing that we have this project already in works, and they don't wanna let this down, and, and so, I don't, and, and she's right, it's just a, it's just like the treat grant that I wrote, I, I'm not, only thing I've heard is that there's a delay in funding, I don't, and it's, and I'm not, you know, then probably the new dollars grants in my life, it's just, it's not, I can't do that, and, and, uh, Chantel, the same way, she's like, this is a, I don't, you can call an asterisk, whatever, but it's a great investment, because it's not, and I'm not taking it with the lobby, but it's a team of three people, that's their job, is to find resources to help towns do these projects, to help us develop, this, and now, the night we developed this thing, all came from, like, coming out of here, and, and came up with the ideas, this is what our city wants, and putting through a group of people who's there, and of course, this was outside of the scope of the June thing too, so it's bad, it's on her part, but she didn't want it to start out, and she said she told us, which we didn't, we told us, this served to help us out too, so, um, but if you have clearly identified products and have resources to help you, then with the scope of your projects, that's something I can't, I, I, I just don't have any.
Well, I propose, yes, I propose a two year contract, and the reason I do that is that it takes me, it takes, I mean, like, a year to get to know you, and that takes time, and, and my world, time is money, so, um, small towns are like kids in a classroom, they're not all the same, you might think that they're all the same, and there's one solution for all of them, but not in a classroom for very long, and you understand they all have different capabilities, and so the scope of work I have for you for the first twelve months is really simple, um, the first part is project development, which, um, I did owe you that survey, actually, I should've had that survey done by June thirty, um, but then I would, if I was gonna keep working with you, I would go forward, and we would get your comprehensive plan updated, and you would get your light substandard study, like, we would, it would be a lot of preparedness, a lot of factual data that we could use, so that, um, applications come along, you're ready, and then the second part of it, there's a little bit of project development, because your swimming pool project is pretty developed, so your swimming pool project is an example of what I'm doing, we can help you write grants for that now, because you have got, you have built enough momentum and enough funding on your own here in Crofton that, that we can help you see it through, which is why I say project development, not grant writing, but the first year, you won't, the first year is a lot of meetings and paper, and, uh, me understanding you, what you're capable of as a community, and then the se, and then by the second year, you should start to see some real, um, some real things happen.
How long have you been on board with Bloomfield?
Um, we just started, we're coming up on a year with Bloomfield, um, in October.
Project, project development?
Um, okay, let me think of Bloomfield, okay, so, um, we are in the middle of their comprehensive plan, um, there was a grant that came out, revitalized rural Nebraska, it was an NDE grant, and it was, um, for Bloomfield, it was like a fifteen percent match for demolition, so we stopped, we were working on planning for them, this came along, we knew that there were two buildings in downtown Bloomfield that really needed to come down, where the owners couldn't freak down. that the owners couldn't freak down. So we wrote this grant, this Revitalize Rural Nebraska grant for that. And they did get that. So now we're working on administering that grant, doing what NDE wants us to do, to get that down. And then like every community, there's another program out there called Rural Workforce Housing. And we were getting Bloomfield ready for that grant, to apply for that grant, but they didn't, they didn't have the right nonprofit structure to apply for that. So we had to stop what we were doing and start working with their nonprofit. In the meantime though, we're also helping them with the funding for the housing study. So NICA, Nebraska Investment Financing Authority, every year they offer grants for housing studies to pay for the cost of a housing study. So Lowell wrote that grant for them, so we're in the middle of updating their housing study. And then they'll get part of our, part of the work we're spending to write their housing study is coming out of their contract with us. But then they will get some of that money reimbursed from NICA to pay for our time. Something else in Bloomfield, library grant. Lowell went, Lowell's not, Lowell took the day off, but he can tell you a lot more details about Bloomfield. But we did just get done doing an energy efficiency lighting grant in Bloomfield.
What did that concern you? What is that, our team, what does that?
They had doors and window issues. And they got a grant for doors and windows. And then the granting agency in Bloomfield, whoever was grant, came back and said, do you have any additional concerns to Lowell after he had the grant? They were able to completely, you all lighting and lighting and the library because of Lowell.
Is it NDE, Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy?
Yeah, because of associating and working with Lowell, first got the grant, these additional resources, just like, go ahead, rewrite your grant, put these in there and we go. That, to me, that's the latitude, the leverage we have because I don't have that. I don't have access to that. And if you want to pull it since she would speak to this, if you wanted to talk to her personally or whatever, she, she had a hundred percent of the support that's in, in the city, may or may not be.
One question I have is, you know, when you were working with JEO, you gave us all those suggestions on grants that we could apply for. It wasn't that we got no or not aware of grants to apply for, it's, we didn't have anyone to write the grant for. And so I mean, I wonder, are we looking to hire a grant writer or someone to help?
Can we piggybacking people and stuff like that?
I mean, would you really write grants for us because we are able to identify grants, but we don't have someone to write?
Yes, grant writer, yes. So, so for tonight, I'm going to use grant writing, I'm going to use the phrase grant writing. Yes, grant writing is in our scope of work. Whatever list of grants you probably got from JEO, you've probably been a part of those, you've been a part of those grants. You've been a part of squash pad grants, been a part of swimming pool grants, been a part of housing study grants, been a part of, um, balloon grants, been a part of water system grants. But what always worries me is that you will get a big list of all these grants that you're supposed to just go for. But then, we, especially Lowell, Lowell's been at this for more than thirty years. And I've now been at this for twenty years actually. But Lowell look at that list and I'll be able to tell you on that list, maybe you want to be for it and maybe we have all of these other things done and completed. So like, you know, to write, to go for a lot of grants, it's extremely competitive out there right now. Especially housing, childcare, water, wastewater, always super competitive. You guys are going up against communities that have more than just like a city clerk, treasurer on staff. You're going up against communities that have this on staff. So you almost always need to have like your updated home rates on hand. And you need to be a leadership certified community member. You need to have an updated housing study. You need to know where your redevelopment areas are. Like there's stuff that has to be done before we get to the grant writing stage.
So those things are required from the grants?
Generally to be more competitive, you know, because you are telling the state of Nebraska or the federal government or a private foundation, we are worth investing in. So if you're asking somebody for hundreds of thousands of dollars, they want to know that like, they want to know that their four hundred thousand dollars is just the last piece of a puzzle that you have already pretty much put together. So there's, there's really no, there are no successful grants out there where the grant funder was the lead agency, grant funder was the one who did the project for you. They always want to come in at the end and help you, help you finish it up. And that's what I've been finding, I would, I would write like a comprehensive plan for a community and those, those are even twenty thousand dollars, just like to give the timing of this to them. And then I would like hand that plan to Donna and Bob and, or if you listen, list of projects that need to get done over the next ten years, and I would just be like, the plus, you know, so you're on a move on to another community and write a plan. Although I hear there are so many more things I need to be developed. So, so yes, we'll write grants for you, but I just don't want you to have the perception that we're just gonna, that we come into a community and we just start writing grants.
Right. Well, I guess my concern is like, I see there's planning and studies and more studies and more plans and, which I think we all can identify projects in our community that need. That are dire evil, you know, it's not like we're, we see a grant and then we're going to make up a project to launch it, which was your first example. I think we have lots of projects, we have projects in the works, but we don't have a grant writer.
I mean, I just, I want to tell you, when we decided, the council decided to take the money that we want to use for the pool or the lagoon, which one did we take? The blue one or the blue one? That's the, anyways, when we put in, we said that you had approved it, I had to go back through all the minutes and find all the preparation that had been made. There was rules that had to be followed that had already been done. You had to look for attorneys, there had to be three of them. Three people had to come here and give proposals to the outgoing council for that. All that had to be done before that funding would even be talked about. So I, I understand what Bobby is saying, he said, you have to have a project, you have to have a plan because you just can't say, I want this grant. There, I want all this preparation done before that, and that's a perfect example. I had to find all this stuff from back from twenty eighteen.
So it wasn't all done already, it's just?
It wasn't that, yes, it wasn't that plan. That's what she's saying, that we've done a lot of work this year for the pool project. So everything was accomplished, it just had to be given to them and proved that we had done it. That you had, you know, did the study, the surveys had been done, funds had been.
So what you're saying is Bobby will pull all that information from our past minutes?
No.
Well, I'll know where to look for it and if you don't have it, I'll know how to make it, I guess.
Does that have to be for the lagoon?
I, I believe so, yeah. And that's what I'm saying, that when you, you can't just go out and say, you see a grant and you want to write it. They want to know what you're going to spend the money on, where you're going to spend the money, who you've talked to about it, who you've got your survey from, who you're, all of that is in there and it all has to be done before you put it in the grant. You have to provide all that. So that's what she's proposing to do, is she, we say, we've got, we want to tear down a building. Where you just can't write a grant to tear it down a building. You have to find out what it's going to cost, you have to find out who's going to be in charge of that. You have to, and you can't just go to one person, you have to have a white council, you have to have so many bids on it. You have to look for an engineer who's going to do it. It, all of that stuff has to be in it before that grant can be written for. That all goes in and written, that's why they're above this thing. So that's what she's proposing to do for us, to put all that together and do that. And then, that's why she's calling a project, planning. She, you tell her, you know, I want this done. And she gets to go in and putting all that together, find it, and then when she gets it done, then she looks for funding for it.
Laura Hyville, to tell you, I know you really want to do this project here, but it's not going to be Crofton for whatever reason. But I feel like you just have a lot of institutional knowledge to offer. And I, so I'm the granddaughter of a San Hill rancher and I sometimes wonder what he would say about me selling plans and studies in paper all the time. But the plans, the plans and the studies that I'm mentioning here, those are things that I know need to get done, that we can get done in the first year, whether or not grant opportunities drop or not. It's what we can get done, I feel like we're not doing anything. That's the first part, the community planning part. And then the project development, as we do good planning and as we get further into it, I, I believe that if you do good planning, that the appropriate projects, for the most important projects will appear. And then they would, when they appear, then the funding stream will appear, which is what's happening here with your swimming pool. So the meeting that Bob and Lowell had earlier this week is for a grant, Land and Water Conservation Fund, which comes from Gable Park. And it's extremely competitive, a lot of communities are using it for pickleball courts, splash pads or swimming pools. We helped Humphrey with it a couple of years ago. And we feel like you're almost, you're almost there where this funding stream will come in and get you up to the finish line. But you've been, you've been working at it for a while. And I know there's other projects that you want to do that just take a little bit more organization.
So our childcare, not to take away, but childcare that already has done a lot of recovery and has C4K in place, right? So that's a, that's a next, that's something that has a plan, right? So that we're willing to, with your help, already move forward on that, right? To do something?
Well, I think so, like, I know you guys have LBA 40. I feel like, I think we've mentioned or visited about, though it's time to update your LBA 40 plan. And now your LBA 40, LBA 40 economic development traditionally is always supposed to go to for-profit businesses. And then like six years ago, they said it could also go to housing development. And now two years ago, they said it could also go to fund any kind of childcare. So if you get your childcare center set up, then you have, you have a sustainable funding stream for your childcare through your LBA 40. Yeah, your childcare folks are, they're well on their way too. C4Ks, Newman Grove is another client of mine, and I applied for Newman Grove to get into C4K and we did not, we did not get in. So we're back to the drawing board, figuring out what we're going to do next with childcare in Newman Grove.
All right, you've done a lot of planning, lay it sounds, I've been listening. A lot of planning's got to get done, not to see who's got to go through. A swimming pool is probably, in my eyes, probably a very important thing to have you trying to do. How long, what point do we need to, I mean, how long is it going to take to get a grant? Do you even know how long it's going to take? You might miss it out if we don't do it, right?
Well, grants, like the best grants usually only come out once a year. And it usually takes a year to be ready for them. So this swimming pool grant that I mentioned, this land and water conservation, it's due every year in September. So we'll apply for it.
We have a headline on this money that.
Yeah, but not, not for the grant.
We got to show that.
I know, but they have nothing to do with the grant. They have nothing to do with it, we already, we already, we already have, let's say, this tax, we have a, I have.
We own a pool house.
This is for the pool, yeah, I think land and water conservation is going to go through your shower house, right? Like your pool's already happening.
Yes, yeah. So we got to, we got to have the money to get the pool house and even hee-hawing around a little bit, trying to figure out the best option for JEO and everybody else. What, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, how long is it going to take to get money for these grants anybody's talking about? I mean, is there, does it take three months, four months, six months?
Well, they're, they're all different, I mean, there are some grants.
How much time does it take to, that you have to work on? I mean, is there, you know, you work on it all year or you work on this?
It just depends, like the, the tree grant that Bob just mentioned was the Nebraska Forestry Service. So Oxford is a client of mine, Arapahoe is a client of mine. I've been with Arapahoe for like six years, so I know, I know them inside and out. And I know the, uh, village super, or the city superintendent really well. So when that, when that forestry grant dropped out of nowhere, no, the state's, the state Nebraska is never giving away money for free trees, but when that, when that grant dropped, there was like a thirty-day turnaround before the application was due. So I applied for it within thirty days. But I was ready for it because I already knew of the, Oxford had needs in their golf course and Arapahoe had needs in their cemetery for new trees. But sometimes, like this land and water conservation grant, that can take a year to develop. It's a four hundred thousand dollar grant. That tree grant was a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. The Bloomfield library grant, that was just another one where NDE had extra money. So sometimes, sometimes the money literally does sort of fall out of the sky and we have to be ready. But if I don't know your community very well, if I haven't done the plans and studies for you, then I don't know if we're just, just applying for money because money's there or if I know something that's actually appropriate for you.
Because that's what's hard for me, because I don't have the background to do the grant in thirty days to do it right. So when I competed against Bobby for the tree grant, who are you going to? Right? I, I thought I did agree on you, you picked me.
But I also like, it also takes time to get to know you and time takes money. And so I'm basically asking you, paying you for my time to, to understand who you are and to make trips here and to know like what, it's like you got to understand a community's personalities. You have to understand their capabilities, you have to understand their appetite for risk, what, what kind of shape their infrastructure's in, and that takes, like that takes time.
So what's happened, your forecast was five hundred down the road. You said you have like six or eight communities that you're working with. How, how many communities can you, would effectively?
Well, I feel like, I mean, I felt like I was pretty much set with the Knox County contract. But then, so with Knox County contract, I always proposed two-year contracts. And we got six months into it and the county said that they didn't have the budget or they didn't have the money or whatever. So I'm like, I'm, I'm trying to replace that contract.
But do you look at yourself having a hundred town with twenty, twenty-eight down the road and just, this is where you, this is the size?
I would like to be bigger, but like Lowell, Lowell's a, he's not here now, but he's got so much institutional knowledge. He's been doing this kind of work since the nineties. He has the knowledge and he has the heart for it and same with me. Then we have Doug, he's twenty-two and he's, he's getting comfortable with it. But I don't want to, if I try to go to, like, the development district again, like Nina, the issue with Nina has been they have, they have a lot of, they have a lot of turnaround. And I don't want to, I don't want to have a lot of turnaround because then you, then you're getting re-planted all the time. So I hope to be in business for the rest of my life, but I don't know how much bigger that will get. It really just depends on how, because I don't know. I've been at it for six years.
You all have a name and a base now, so it helps to start your next.
Yeah. So I, I was like, Lowell's a fun client. I know that Lowell wants to work on the shower house grant for you. Your community-wide survey has been developed. If you, you can also just go to croftontogether.com and the survey is ready to go online. But I can also make changes to it or tweaks to it. So you have that product. So if you want to keep, if you want to keep working together, then I've answered your questions and you can let me know if you want to enter into a contract, if you want to think about it for a while, I'd sign too. You guys are, is this the second Thursday or the third Thursday? Yeah, the second week of the month is extremely hard because everybody needs something special in the month, right? I was able to get up here tonight to answer your questions about it. So if you don't want to decide right away, I completely understand.
Good call. I can't write from a person's chapter.
I mean, thirty-two thousand dollars a year is like a good deal if you're going to get a grant writer. Plus, we could be a grant writer by the hour. But this community planning, I'm not sure. Someone's, whoever does the grant has to go out, find all this information and work through, obviously, and it's a whole step.
But we are aligned right now to meet this September deadline for the application. For the four thousand dollars, but we are aligned with the task list that Lowell will be less than. That we need to do, the supporting, we'll be aligned with it if we want to serve this.
Can you tell us more in a nutshell how this will help our community?
How this, this, right here?
So we're a two-year contract with you. We're spending our community's money, we're doing our neighbor's sixty-four months. And like, tell us in a short paragraph.
So I feel, so what I'm offering to you is basically to not, to be your economic development professional. So, so a lot of communities, especially larger communities, have an economic development director. And what I've seen in the last several years is, like, communities the size of Crofton, they might do like part-time economic development. But economic development is, it's full-time and it's multifaceted. And so what we're proposing to do for you is be your economic. And so, um, what we're proposing to do for you is be your economic developer. And even though like sixty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money for two years, um, you would not be able to hire a professional economic developer for that amount of money. And you're paying for, to Doug, that's program management, day-to-day stuff, programs that we start. Um, I do a lot of planning, so like that, put plans and the studies. If you get ready to put a grant together and I go dig for your minutes and everything, or dig for the plans or studies you adopted in the past. If you don't have those plans and studies, I have the certification to create those for you. Or I have the experience to work with your engineer or J D O on your behalf to tell them what you need and why you need it. And you need it and that can be more than what you need. And then, um, I have Lo, we have Lo's expertise to basically go outside and hunt something. So I feel like the three of us are like, what a full-time economic developer would need for you. And then another reason that I set the price kind of high is that hopefully we will do a good job for you. And we will drum up enough activity and another, enough other revenue streams. But you may decide that you do want to hire a full-time economic developer. And you are used to paying, you are used to paying that cost in the budget. You're already used to paying fairly high amounts for, um, a professional economic developer. So if somebody local comes along or, um, I have helped you build up your sales tax revenue. Or I truly believe that we can save for ourselves within two years with the other funding that we can bring in. You are, as a council, you are used to it and you understand what economic developer means. And you have some exposure to what an economic developer can do for you. So one day you may want to hire your own economic developer and I will have you, I'll have you ready to do that.
Will you work with our people that we have in the community that help us with economic development in the house? Aaron Phillips or?
Yeah, like I would, um, I wouldn't actually work with the council that much. I mean, I would come, so I would, we, myself or Lo would come to a quarterly meeting just to basically like report and be accountable. And then, like, the scope of work right now is very big because we're in the first year and I don't know you well, that's a bit more specific. Um, but we, we set up a time sheet that matches the scope of work. So, so my job, my role with the council is more about accountability, at least to what we're doing with our time and showing you our time sheets and our reports. But we would work more with it depending on the project that we're working on. Like right now, I'd love to really get in there with your L B A forty community, I'd love to really get, like, get down in the north end and get, um, your economic development work under there. So if we were, if we were like in Bloomfield, if we were doing a library project, you'd work with your library. But I would want to know you well enough that I would know who at Crofton is tall or whatever thing we're working on.
I think if you would work with our economic development community that we have, we're some people in the community and maybe, provide them some guidance on what to do because I think that we have some good people in the community that would like to, right, instead of-
Yeah, I met, well, I met a lot of great people when I came to the, when I went to the Foley Museum thing this spring, winter. Um, and then I came and did the, um, I came and did that, since this workshop here. Um, and that's what I created the survey out of. Like, I already feel like I know a lot of people with Crofton. And, um, that's why I'm, like, when I found out it wasn't going to be given off the county contract, I was most disappointed. I'm not kissing up to you at the work, but I was most disappointed to not continue working with Crofton. Because I feel like Crofton, I feel like this community has been through a lot in the last several years. But, um, so many people that I've talked to have, I don't know, I felt have been very genuine about being committed to Crofton. And, um, you know, like where I come from, with Danhills, you already have so many things here to work with that are long gone in a lot of the communities that I work with. So, so I kind of wanted, I didn't want to leave Crofton.
So do we have to do a two-year contract or can we do a shorter contract and then just go like extended?
Yeah, so I would, I would like you to, I would like you to consider a two-year, but I put in the proposal letter, we would, we will renegotiate the contract after the first year. I just want to be, I just want to be upfront with the expectation that in one year of working with you as your economic developer, I can't, I can't really make you any promises about projects I know can happen in that first year. So we, we can renegotiate in a year. I mean, so when you execute the contract, I do ask for the first quarterly payment and that's giving me some money to work with upfront. However, you have the right to, you know, I invoice you every quarter and I'm just a contractor, I'm not an employee. So you always have the right to fire me or to not pay the invoice or to hold off on it or whatever. So even though it's a two, a two-year contract, you're paying me a quarter at a time. But we can-
How long have you been helping them?
How long have I been helping them for?
No, I don't care.
Uh, for a year.
So in that year, how much have you accomplished for them?
Um-
You missed that segment, I mean.
Uh, just a, so we did a N V E grant, we're helping them, we got grant money for them to tear down two buildings in downtown Bloomfield. We worked with them on rural workforce housing grant, but they're a nonprofit. They didn't have the right nonprofit structures, I had to go back to the drawing board with them on that. Um, we're in the middle of a housing study for them, where it got done with their light study. I think a better example, who would hear me, is probably Tilden. Tilden was the first community that, that I did this with and we started in twenty-twenty-one. And I did their comprehensive plan for them. That was a separate contract. And then I did, um, then we did light, their light substandard studies. So like Karen Crofton, fifty percent of the town couldn't light it. Usually I hate trying to do a light study when, when they also want to do a project in that same area where this site is done. So I forget that's done ahead of time. So, so until then, we did their comprehensive plan, that was not part of the contract. And then they hired me. In that following year, we got some light study done. And then, I, I'm not going to say I held their hand, but I walked with them to put a tax-incentive financing project in place. So where the old nursing home was at in Tilden, it was storage for western construction. So then we utilized tax-incentive financing, Russians tore the nursing home down and put in a fifteen lot subdivision. And then now this last year, the rural workforce housing, um, funding dropped. And they had extra money to spend, so it was like two hundred thousand dollar grant for a fifty thousand dollar match. So we applied for rural workforce housing and tried to help with building up that subdivision. Tilden did not have their L B A forty program in place, so that was one of the projects that we helped them with. We helped them have the public hearing, write the L B A forty plan, um, get the plan onto the ballot. And then we did education for the community, but we did not campaign for the community. Um, and we've done a civic and community center financing fund just to study for a new community center that they're trying to build, so.
So then first two years, it was worthwhile?
Yeah, but the first two years until then was not part of our economy. They had hired me, they had hired me for a contract of forty thousand dollars to write their comprehensive plan, update their light substandard study and then work with their engineer and put a capital investment plan together. And so that contract was all said and done and I was going to be moving on to another community and doing planning work. And they asked me if I would consider, if we could try to come up with something where I would keep working with them to help them work on these projects that were in those plans. And they're a good example because we've also helped them, um, get the funding to get, um, uh, engineering report for a well done. I can't think of the word right now, but they needed another well dropped. So, so we've helped Tilden with their community center, we've helped them with housing development, we've helped them with demolition. Um, it's just like, there's so many things in the community and it can get very overwhelming. So, but not in your community is the same. So it's not like, okay, we got a light study and a housing development done in Tilden. That doesn't mean I'm going to come here and Crofton and get, get that done. Everybody's different.
Are you going to give a monthly report written or something to the exclusive progress?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be quarterly, not monthly. And I started with monthly, but the months sometimes go by too fast and your agendas get so full anyway. Um, so I've gone to quarterly. So-
We will get, we will get a report from you quarterly on that.
Yeah, I will get a written report and then like, so your scope of work has those tasks set up in it. And since this is the first year, since the first time we're doing this, I came up with a scope of work and it's pretty generic. It's a lot of planning and studying, plans and studies and meetings and meeting engagements. Um, but we have a time, we have a time sheet system in our office. So, um, you'll get, I'll set up the projects and then those tasks and the scope of work are how we record our time. And then you'll get a time sheet every quarter. So every quarter you get the invoice, uh, written report, a time sheet, and then somebody will come and first thing. And since you're clear up here, and I'm clear down in Carney, sometimes it won't be you, sometimes it will be Lo.
But to your conversation, Erin Phillips was at the meeting, requested Lo because she had worked with the pool before. And when she left, she was empowered because she had done some of this legwork that, for the pirate pool, the engineering, those kind of things, that she had on her phone, could pull up on her computer. But they were, they were going to make this whole process more important if we qualified well. So much easier that she had to hire her some peers of them. And so, yeah, we empowered her, I mean, she, and she's an economic developer person. So I, like you said, we have a tremendous amount of good people and resources that we need to empower. And I believe that five weeks of help is important for me.
So, and at the beginning, like Crofton, so many people that are involved are volunteer. And they're raising their own kids and they're running their own businesses. And so you get a lot of progress, you get a project going and then something happens, like a tragedy happens in your life or something happens with your business or your children reaching other stages in life. And so it's not a priority for you anymore, but this is, this is how I, this is my livelihood. And that's how it's like, that's how it stays a priority for us because if the work doesn't get done, um, we don't get paid. But I just have to tell you, like, um, I know it seems like a lot of money, but we're for profit, we have to save business. And this work that I do, it really, it still just comes down to being a kid in Murda, Nebraska and feeling like we had a really nice school and there were really nice homes, but always being still outside of town and really nice combines. But at the same time, if it would rain, our trees would flood. It's like, we weren't worth having a swimming pool in Murda, we weren't. And I just, it felt like small towns in agricultural areas get overlooked all the time. And this has taken me several years to figure out how to turn this into a way to support myself and still do this kind of work. So if you need some time to think about it, I completely understand. I don't want it to be a hard sell. I hope we're not going to do it.
I'll second.
What would you do if you had second? Lauren?
Yes.
Merlin?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
So I'll-
I am really relieved now because I have so much confidence in you going forward. And I, and I don't want to burden anybody, but it's just-
I will, um, so I'll send the contract and then, so there's plenty of work to be done. We're going to get this community survey done and get the results back from that. And in the meantime, then, um, Lo will be up here working with you on the shower house grant.
Great.
Hi, glad to be here so quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mom. Nice to meet you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item, one, uh, new business is a canyon shop park. And I think Donna had a, what, Hannah, I'm sorry, Hannah?
There's something in here about a good, actually, Chantel wanted me to present it to you. Since we put the higher electric, we went from the twenty amp to the fifty amp out there. And she was questioning that, we have a lot of people coming in, we charge ten dollars a day, that, for the first day. The second day is free, then you pay ten dollars for every day after. She thinks since we make improvements to concrete, thinks that we should do away with the free night. She thinks that we, they have showers that are available, bathrooms are available, and she just thinks that we should do away with the free night.
I have no problem with that, no.
And I-
I think I'm also, uh-
Yeah.
Do we want to keep like a ten dollars a day or? I don't have a pay for it. I don't know.
It costs thirty dollars to camp on Old Fielder.
All, all of that, you know, any more and fifty amps and-
Kid was out there last weekend, costing two hundred and ten bucks for seven days, so.
Yeah, and I would tell you, I did have, somebody came to church, I don't know, my church over here that had camp there. And they said, this is one of the nicest places that you can camp at. With the trees we have there, the shade is a memorial because they were just in awe of what we have there, like a shelter.
I think it should be at least fifteen, eighteen, twenty.
Do we have any idea how much power that place? How much do you pay unless it, it's all metered for this building, or there's seven meter for that?
I don't know.
I, a fifty dollars is cheap. I mean, I get a lot of payments in that.
Twenty?
You want to put twenty? Twenty is still very, very, very reasonable.
It's reasonable, very reasonable.
You can't as much as I do, so.
You can motion to charge twenty dollars a night to camp at the south park.
I got, I got one more item on this south park and I just got notified today about it.
Pull up, pull up, let's do the vote.
What?
Let's do the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So the motion's been made in second that we have a twenty dollar dealer rate for camping in the south park. Mer?
Yes.
Pike?
Yep.
Womack?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Parker?
All right, I got notified from a Legion member today that, you know, we have a beautiful park, we got beautiful flags. They found four or five of them that kids had bent them in half. People pulling the flags out and throwing them on the ground. I, I think we need to be aware that we got some vandalism going on. And Legion is one of the things you don't want to be vandalizing over here. He's very proud to have that in our park. So just making aware, this guy was a little upset and wanted to know what they should do and isolate him. They broke the poles in half, they can't fix them, they took a bunch of them and threw them on the ground. He actually drove by and seen it, but he hustled it down. So the military's got, we got to respect him. I mean, I'm just bringing it to your attention, so if we hear anything or see anything going on, we need to, you know, let people know that that kind of respectful.
We can make a public request to, that if anybody has any information about this, that they could please-
I mean, they, they don't, they don't, they don't say too much, but this guy was a little upset when American flag is pulled out, thrown on the ground. And we always-
I have one question, is tent camping allowed in the park?
Sure. Is that, you know, be the- Tent camping, I think, I don't know why it wouldn't be.
Is that, but that's free of charge right now?
Yeah.
Because there was a couple, you know.
Yeah, I don't see it if he's allowed to even-
I don't, I haven't looked at-
They actually paid for that night. The camper, the tent people paid ten dollars for that night. They put it in the box.
Yeah, that was nice, though.
I would just bring it to your attention about the disrespectful that the people are having on.
I think to the point that we, we could put something in the paper.
Yeah, let's do that, let's do that.
See if we have any information.
It takes probably two and a half hours putting flags up.
Oh, yeah.
Lot of volunteer help out there.
Maybe you should put a camera over there.
I thought about that too, but the council has got to talk. We got, maybe you got an extra camera you could put out there and put it on, I don't know where we put it, I'll tell you the truth.
I think if we just, um, maybe put something in the paper and ask parents to remind their kids to be respectful of the flags.
Yeah, I don't believe a camera's a bad idea, I just don't know how many you would need. I mean, it's a-
They can stand behind another flag and-
If you put it in the paper, people are going to be aware and they're going to start watching.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I was saying.
You know, you got a pretty good group of neighbors here that-
Yeah, watch every- that's too bad.
Would you, just a thought here, would you want to consider a different fee for tent camping?
I don't think we, I mean, the reason, I think the reason we charge the fee is a lot cheaper. You know, fifty amp, break your poles. I mean, I run air conditioning, it's, it's worth it, twenty, camp in, tent camp in, you know, shower house.
Ten people, I don't think are going to be there for the night.
I think in the, in the year that lived here, I believe it's the one that requires.
Yeah, there was the night when the bike ride came through, there was a full camp, but other than that, I never seen it. We'll, we'll just hope there are a better people, a hundred and fifty dollars.
We'll see how it goes and if it gets out of control, maybe we'll make a fee first.
Sounds good, all right. Okay, next item is the closing of the street for the ban race on July twenty.
The motion for the street parade is settled.
Motion's been made to secondly, reports of the street, like, on the way to the home race, Pike, you know, Womack?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, as long as we're closing the street or on the field, I had a, um, an implication or a question, I would have a, it's like to close the street, a public street, sharing street, Friday night, weekend, tomorrow, for a neighbor group party on that street. And I said, we had a closing on there, so I would see what you do, what your boss or the council. I don't, I don't, I, I have my thing, but it's your, it's your deal. Decide what you want to do. It's a group of forty, thirty, four-
I think it's, it's another twenty-seven, too. I think it's, it's another twenty seven, too. Maybe, maybe I'll bring something on the Sunday.
He said a week from tomorrow, when they want to-
Twenty six.
A week from this Friday?
A week from this Friday, so tomorrow's the what, Thursday?
Seven to twelve, so that would be the night.
Two, two.
Um, awesome.
I guess, I guess, I, two.
Oh, and that was a twenty six.
Twenty six.
Okay.
Oh, that would be two weeks, tomorrow.
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe it's two different things, but I, I think they coincide, it could be two.
Right, but they just want to know if it's tomorrow. Uh, to close a public street for a block party, and I'm gonna just say that, okay, I'm, we have invested, as a community, a tremendous amount of resources in making our park be really nice, and I have nothing against, the neighbors getting, whatever happens, but like, to make a decision, what you want to do, like, they're close to the party, I think, and I myself, it's, I don't know, the street is street, I-
So it's Sharon Street is the-
Sharon, now, the suggestion is to, what's suggested, they can have a street party, but put it on Forest Street, which runs north and south, between Loretta and Sharon Street, you know, and it would only affect, um, the house and the vendor, but they could go north of that, so it'd be in between the six pack houses, or six flats, and the driveway of Overheart, or then Overheart, there's a nicer, and there's even an actual post that would go down into, through the west, and it would go down into the field, so I don't, I don't know, it's, that's, it's weird, Paul, just, I just want you to know, you're gonna set a precedent to you, if you do this, and whatever you decide to go for, so.
So you gotta think about, what if there's a fire, or an ambulance call?
No, that's-
And there's which ones?
Then it's, it's estimated time is begin six P M. to nine or ten P M., that was kind of-
I get my question, once twenty six, closing the street, that it's gonna put cones out, but the real fire, it makes it very complex.
But I think that, that would be like a blow, I don't know-
Oh, 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 okay.
What, what their intent for-
Okay, yeah, I didn't-
What do you have, does the party people set up under the street, too? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I have a lot about that.
They can say that they would allow them to close the street, unless an emergency event happens, and then, you just gotta have that open in the event room.
I don't know, I mean, if you, if you, you're all for it, yeah, so, yeah, well, yes, so, I don't know, because we're gonna establish a precedent, so you can come to us and say, as long as we go forward.
Can we close the street, like, on, so say people come down to Sharon, and they go for a, like, the stop sign, towards the six flats, like, could we close the street, just on that east portion of the street, where there's a clear route around?
What do you think about closing, like, you said in the South Street?
Um, Sharon, but just east of that north and south street, just a small-
West of the, west of the-
East of the, yeah, in front of, in front of your, on the east, sort of, right, in front of-
In front of Sprockles?
Yeah, in front of Sprockles.
And you said-
That part they would-
Hold on, I heard-
You want to keep that open?
No, that would be the part you could close.
Because then people could go all the way around.
Right, right, but the families who want to do it are the west, and I do it in front of the house.
Oh, no, they're open, they can do it, right, basically, or if it's empty.
I'm asking you, I guess, that was the thing, is they don't, no one there has a yard that's large enough to accommodate Jim Murphy and company, then there was one single yard, and that's, you know, and that's the point, is that, and I, who else here is it, and I just, I love kids, and I love that environment or whatever, but, I took my kids to a party where I had to run out of rest, or there wasn't the church going on at that time, I didn't teach my kids how to wrestle in the street, sorry, I'm gonna sit out loud, but, that, that's a, a lot of kids there, and use a lot of good things happen, positive things happen, in that environment, with all those kids, and I don't want to discourage that off.
Um, what, what, they're around, they're out, they're out, they're, they're, they're west, yeah. No, uh, west of that, there's Alice and older, that, the two of them, I think, are the last. Let's give this.
I'll be honest with you, I had, people, I'm, if they're sick, we need to, I don't know, it could be done with your neighbors.
Murphy?
It could be done with your neighbors, because we all are on the same page, you know, for the street, we, we don't get it wrong, I live on a block, one dead end, one street, and we're not just in traffic.
Right.
And sure, that's our biggest issue, traffic.
And we don't have people in our area for graduation parties, and get in like that, it's just making a difference, it's not an issue.
So it-
This is convenient, I, I think, Friday night, six.
How about it, for the, uh, well, it's closed out.
Where's the town?
Just say one.
Just, where, uh, for that, uh, north and south street, go, that we drive right into the city, probably, exactly.
South Street.
I will offer that as a suggestion, but not, then there's one more blocking, and then it's-
Yeah, I mean, it's all over the city, right, you're there, and you don't know, like, you're there.
They'll need, they'll be the, the football field, because it'd be different, maybe the gardens, and maybe in the park.
Correct, we, the city owns that.
Yeah, yeah, the gardens is a city's, and then, they go, near side of the football field, then there do-
I don't know, but then again, I had, sixty, eighty people-
Right, so maybe, or-
Eighty, so it can be-
So I will respond as if the city doesn't have this time, if you want them to do that.
Okay.
All right, I will, okay, thank you, Erin, moving on, would be the, our policy of the second, and you have a paper there that certain members advise, uh, people calling that, so we do.
I have had many complaints, uh, people put out flowers before, um, Memorial Day, Mother's Day, Father's Day, and our policy says that they can only stay on there ten days after Memorial Day, and other special days. What they're requesting, and I wrote up a new one, if you like it, I actually wrote that we have to adopt, is that, uh, the people that are complaining are the ones who have had, uh, the flower pots attached to the monuments, and they're high enough up that a weed whacker can get under them, or mowing can get under them. They would like if anybody's got that, that the flowers can stay in it, but we're also taking those flowers off, because it doesn't, all it says is, the flowers have to be taken on. So Dustin and all other maintenance people, they take them off, that's, that's what they say, says, but then that's what they're asking, pay for these, that they're getting upset about what it costs, and they are only out there for ten days, and they're gone.
So it says, if the maintenance crew has to remove these items, they will be disposed of, so why don't they just leave them there on the way?
Because it says that they are taken off, responsible for removal of artificial flowers on the gravesite within ten days after Memorial Day, and they don't come and take them off, so the maintenance department takes them off, that's always been the policy. And that's what I'm asking, is if we just tell the, them that they can leave the ones that are in the flower pots that are attached to the monuments.
Sure.
That, that's all they're asking for. It's just, it's just a, what the maintenance says.
One of the other factors, the owner and the idiot, and the third one.
Yeah.
Right?
I think that the way it's worded is fine, they can still leave them off.
No, it says, owner of the plot's family, the deceased is responsible for removal of artificial flowers on the gravesite within ten days after Memorial Day, and any other special days, like, if they take them on Labor Day, they can only do it ten days, if they don't take them off, then the maintenance crew will.
If the maintenance crew has to remove them, they will be disposed of.
Yeah, and they throw it away, they don't save them, or try to find out-
I say we just tell the maintenance crew to leave them unless they're away.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and that's what the, the new claim says.
Is that an order?
Um, well, you adopted, this was a resolution, as the cemetery, here for the cemetery.
We need to have, I think, I think, I think the motion, the, the maintenance crew, they're not a fair one, no, immediately, no.
So it's, it's affected what's said there?
Yeah.
The five, the five, yeah. Motion's been made, second?
I think it's worded weird, but, okay.
Uh, Miller?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is two of these buildings, buildings, I guess I could have blew it down.
Is this about my question about those?
No.
Okay.
What was your question about?
Well, I have had some people ask me, and I know we've talked about it in meetings before, where, if you just have one service, do you have to pay for all the services?
Yes.
That's exactly what this is about, because I get this asked all the time. So I think that if you just need one service, that's fine, right? If a person requests one service-
If they don't have water, they don't have water, do they have water on that?
We have, we have customers that don't have water, because they have wells, we have customers that don't have sewer, because they have, uh, septic tanks, and, uh, some of them, we have customers that only have garbage pay out.
But they're paying for all three?
No, those customers, if they don't, if we don't have sewer to their house, they don't pay for sewer, we don't have water to their house, we don't pay for water.
I had someone reach out to me, and they were probably paying for a service they didn't receive.
Right, and that's what I get all the time. Some people, like, um, Mr. Lebohaus, he actually, uh, Brian, he actually, um, talked about here one night, he's got a dumpster for his business, he pays for a resident to put it up at his house, he'd like to just take his garbage and put in that, because he's already paying for that dumpster, so he doesn't want to pay for garbage, and that's, that's all I need, is to be able to do that, because we have a lot of people like that.
So I'll make a motion to only charge people for the services that they need.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made, the second, they're going to feel respectful, but what do you say about wanting garbage in there? That's okay?
Yeah.
Right.
I have a final question, what is your name?
We actually have, well, the policy that I gave you says, that if they don't want garbage, they have to prove to the city that they're taking it to a landfill that gets rid of it, if they're not going, yes, that's what, that's what, this is your policy in your red policy book, it says if they don't want it, they have to show that they are taking it, uh, somewhere where they're not dumping into trees, or, and then, uh, and they have to prove where they're gonna take it.
Thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion, the second, it would be, you know, Pike?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then, could execute, right of light event, have been at Central?
I make some motions, you'll feel about rights, and I'd be glad.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, the second, to approve the red light, March, October, six, so that, Pike? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, so moving on to old news, and the first item in old news is a new pool contract with an engineer. I don't have, you talked with him on the phone, so, Andrew, I think that's more Jonathan that-
Andrew Pennington?
Andrew Pennington, yeah, he and I had a discussion, because in order for us to secure the loan, we need to have some updated information, so I told Andrew, we, we have to have, in order to get our loan approved for the bank, we have to get some updates on the cost, and, and we don't want to spend eighty thousand dollars to go forward, and I don't know who I talked to him or whatever, but he was really gracious, humble, and, maybe twenty, no, give me, that was a Monday morning, give it till Tuesday evening, and I'll have an updated, estimated cost for you, and it wasn't an hour later, and I had it, and so I had it, I came to the city office, Donna printed it, and I took it to Larry Cooper, and had one laser, put on my desk, so he has-
We're ready to go.
The latest, greatest numbers, and so, I had, I tried multiple times, but of course, obviously, step one, and all them, accident, of course, and so I don't, I haven't got, he hasn't got a back to me yet.
Larry, Larry, Larry got it, got it, so.
Right, yeah, so, you know, so, he, the numbers are there, to, for the custom in cost for the pool, so, to answer your question, Larry, that money is as good as spent, I mean, as, we're ready to, with banks, ready to, to sign off on that loan, the rate, to tell G, what, or, and sort of get major, it's the sentence, Larry, who's that, and then if the other four hundred thousand dollars comes along, or when that does, then, we will levy every, leverage every community service that we have on the town, for pool house, you know, and, yeah, that's what I have, then, all right, property update, uh, property stimulus is that Nick and I have been working together, um, I did get a email from Mr. Stevens, through Nick, that said that, according to our policy book, there was not anything specific we stated that's, we can't, that we can get higher realtor, and so Mike, Mr. Stevens is currently understanding or investigating the legal process of us hiring a real, a real estate agent, Nick Stout, who you hired, um, has gone and searched his legal people, and they said there's absolutely no problem with that, but I told Nick, I can't go forward until Mike says it's okay, even though Nick says it's-
Mike said there might be a problem hiring a realtor?
Yeah, according to what, what's printed in our, that's different, different, and I, and my thing is that, when we did this, we, the realtor for us is mass marketing, and I, and that's what I asked Mike, at Mr. Stevens, is like, what's the difference between having Nick put this on, Moss Oak, which makes it a global rate, versus us hiring a mass marketing company, while we're making global for us, so we get the same free loan and effective margins, and so I have, have to back to him, I'm worried, and in addition to that, I asked Mike for the document, for me to have, family members of, how it's set up on, and I don't have that document yet either, so, I'm waiting for that document as well, but I contacted some of the family members from the loan, and they are ready to tentatively, legally sign, if, if the document makes lawyers happy, and not as funny, so that we can get something open.
I did talk to the, the decision, um, he knows.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, other than that, uh, I don't know, I haven't been out there lately, have you looked?
I talked to Jim Stevens this morning, at the Holiday store, St. Rose, paying up for some concrete, so we're doing that, uh, Danny was notified to bring in, uh, the dirt, the dirt, gravel, that needs to be packed down before the concrete gets put in, uh, Todd told me he was gonna get it shortly, uh, Jeremy said, he's ready to, after this, after Todd passes it, Jeremy's ready to, so, he said by, he told me, he just passed off this morning, he said by, hopefully in a couple of weeks, the concrete, we can afford, and we gotta wait seven to ten days for the traffic, cutting and everything will be done by then, so, he's thinking maybe, hopefully by the first full week of August, you know, probably, hopefully if everything goes good, we all get no rain, which we need rain, then all, it's slowly picking up, and that's where we had a problem with raining, and we had some problems with the St. Rose, because the sewer line was broke from a tree stump, that they had to get out to repair that, and, you know, farmers had to retest the, uh, water line, fertilize it, and then they put fire hydrant there, they got that tested, everything is good, go there, uh, Jeremy told me that he's gonna put, he put four two halves, between those two halves, he's gonna put, pull the three bars, so we don't have this jumping around in the middle.
The water is great, did he-
It, it does, it does, but, you know, we've had a lot of rainy days, and you can't move dirt and mud, and you can't do it, so, we're, we're on the right track, and Jeremy's doing a fantastic job, making everything go the way it's supposed to go, and I think the water will be dispersed, a lot of that, a lot of water's gonna go down Iowa Street, like, supposed to be down by that, uh, park, Mike Miller's down there, that storm drain on that side road, and there's a storm drain right across there, on, next to, uh, I think I think Lazenby, I don't know. So that water's gonna go, the other water's gonna be going towards Highway twelve, going down that street, and some down through the road that's in that little alleyway next to the high school, that grade school. So everything, everything looks good, uh, it's got the dirt piled out of our property out north of town, so a lot of dirt out there. You know, so, uh, that's, that's all good, and...
So, uh, I was getting back, the other part of that is that Tim Global has been hired by you to do that, and I don't know if he's done with that, has that, has it been laid out, has it surveyed out yet?
Nothing's laid out yet.
So I mean, we hired Tim, we hired a construction company, put the culvert in, but they can't put the culvert in until we know exactly where the roadway's gonna be.
We're gonna have to cut that, yeah, no.
So as soon as Tim gets done laying out where the road's gonna be, then the culvert person's ready, and we have the soil there to take that down, take it there, all the, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. Okay, the next thing, street update, construction, there's a concrete on Iowa, and I'm at the fire hall, and I guess someone will have to pay for the case and we'll buy another.
Well, I've only got one bid on that. Okay, never got back to me, I called him, here's, here's all case, Emily, uh, please.
Jason, who does, who does that other concrete company, Adam, who do they work for?
Close.
Close and close. Does he have an estimated?
But these aren't apples and apples, I see neither. And I laid out with both of them the same way.
Oh, wow.
And I don't know what, okay, he's gonna get the forty-seven B mix because... We, I don't have one. But we need to talk about, you know, he's got on there a six-inch thick forty-seven B mix, where's that coming from?
Concrete? I don't know, I thought you contacted someone, I didn't.
Yeah, I did four oh two, and they don't have forty-seven B.
No, we got forty-seven B all on this history.
No, they don't.
At four thousand, huh, first quarter inch?
The, uh, concrete bid that I got from them, this is the exact, exact same concrete that's going up there front school.
What, I don't know concrete, what's forty-seven B, what's that?
It's a heavy mix.
Okay, so we probably need that out here because of the heavy of the truck, right? The, the side of the fire truck.
Right, and...
Plus it's on history.
Four oh two doesn't have forty-seven B.
Four oh two.
That's the concrete plant? That's, this bid is what, um, four oh two said they're putting on fifty, so that's real clear.
Who's four oh two?
The concrete outfit up by Mark Miller.
Oh, that Mark, play, that's Mark, okay, okay, I just trying to keep up.
And he doesn't, Mark doesn't have forty-seven B.
So this...
Why do we, is it for sure that we need that?
Well, as, as far as what Steven told me is, this exact concrete is what's going up front school.
Is, uh, is, you're gonna, as a fire chief, you're, you're gonna pour that approach, the fire department's gonna pour that approach over here?
We're gonna take care of it, you know, our block, our, our, this, um, the one from Claussen, they're gonna, they bid in all the gutter and curb on the south side also, because, no, not all the way down, just that top. Because he said in order to delay concrete after that, make it look nice, he said if we get it done, it'll be all the way down, it's all broken.
Well, and that's, I guess that's like, I guess the way I look at it, you're gonna agree with me, we're gonna do it, let's do it.
Yeah, if we're gonna do a street...
I don't wanna do, hard to sit here and fight you because it won't match, it won't, it won't blend.
Right, and that ditch that comes on the north side from the street up, I think I'm gonna talk to the rural board and put a new tube in there, where that drain tube comes across, and run that tube all the way down to our approach, so that the water comes out onto our approach and goes down the street and stuff, and then fill that, that...
Oh, that's the one that's east from us there?
The one that's coming, coming east, yeah.
On the south side or north side?
North side.
There's a, there's a, there's an end on the one on the south side, there's no opening, not the west side. It's simply recovered dirt.
Yeah, I guess I didn't even look at that.
Yeah, there's, there's one there, I live on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's an end, but no, we're gonna, oh, totally, so it's something I doubt actually, I didn't agree on, that's true, it's all possible. For special residents, and it comes south.
Well, I will, I will, um, we table this now, and I'll get ahold of these guys and then Stevens too, and get everybody on the same, same scope. I thought I talked to this guy a little bit better, and I know we measured out a little more than that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to...
Yeah, I think that's, he stopped up here, I think is where he stopped. I know when we walked all the way down the street, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I have a question, did, did it, are you attempting to do something about the alleyway? That would be, that's halfway between the old, uh... The corner you're talking about, and on down to the west, the alley that goes south? Are you trying to do something about that alley, when the drains go down that alley as well?
No, because right here on the corner, we would have to, you would have to raise that, there you are, it's so high, to get it to run onto the street. So with that, that, um, culvert being here, yeah, it, it should be able to drain without eating this corner, like it is doing now. If we're talking about the same corner.
Well, I'm talking about the next, the alley. He's talking about the alley behind, that's, that's, yeah. Right, he talked a couple months ago, that they had some water issues with that, um, are we really going to do it?
No, that's a, that's a whole block, here to pick up speed going down there, water, lot of water, going on the highway there.
Well, in front of his house or behind?
Behind, yes.
They never driven that alley before, really, I mean, I don't know what you can do.
How, how would you work that water? You do, you would make the, the street higher there, so the water coming down the street would come after the culvert. You'd get water somewhere to go, or else it's just gonna go up front of his house.
Oh, that may be, we, like, take a little, the culvert, that might release some of the water going down that street, but I don't know, would make you do it or not.
I don't know.
Brett's complaint was that water rushed down there, it's, it's starting to wash out the alley. Uh, water comes down there and it filters off into his yard.
And that's the reason, okay. Any other questions about that? Uh, sidewalk in the south part? Like, uh, we have the concrete security, we just gotta do, somehow get the manpower, resources to get it to do it.
Really volunteer to do it?
Yeah, yeah. And we have to lay out where we're gonna attach the, the eating those states, you know, over there to the restroom, and then somehow have the gazebo connect into that. And then from the shelter, a nice path will walk way down to Memorial to the mine. And it's most, it's nice, like, okay, people that are religious, handicapped, which we have a multitude of vendors that are that way, that are mobility issues or whatever, just get out to the street, you know, down the street to get to the restroom, or anything like that. It's really, and we have the, concrete's don't even deal with this, I mean...
If, if they're getting on time to leave, oh, first off, that's fine.
I didn't forget the rock, I just, where we're gonna go with it.
According to the last meeting number I talked to, they're talking about taking out that tree right to the west of Memorial, flatten that off, put that big rock there. And I checked on it, gotta be pretty close in the middle of the roadway so much, it's gonna have to be about, pretty close to two foot deep in the middle, with three bar area to hold that rock. The rock is coming from, Jim Amos is around south, and I went and looked at it, it's a big rock. And he said, I talked to the concrete guy, and he said that it's gonna take eighteen inches deep in the middle with three bar, they're twelve inches, and then half around to about twelve inches on the outside, hold it. So I think the lead is gonna pay for the cement. We gotta do something to that tree, and that's where they're gonna put, I'll check with him, yeah. And I don't know if they, they gotta get it moved first, I guess, it's a big rock.
So I guess we're not, don't want to force anyone to tell you where you get that situation.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get the other sidewalk moved, though. It weighs something like fifteen or twenty ton.
Okay, any other questions about that? With not, uh, planning zoning report, I'm asking you, there, economic development? Uh, there's a meeting coming up again. Can't remember what it is, but I'll let you know about economic development. All right. Well, that's, yeah. So what happened with Kelly's party economic development, and what happened with Bobby is that Knox County had him hired, and the Knox County, we, as members of the Knox County Economic Development Board, were paying their bills and buying it, taking investment in Bobby, and we had a budget. And we were working according, working off to, according to the budget, well, we had an emergency meeting where the county then informed the next economic development director, Kelly Andy, that the budget was gonna be gone. There was no money to substantiate the budget. And so because the, somewhere along the line, it was this communication between, there was a budget, but there was never resources to substantiate that budget. And so they were working off the budget, going along, finding the resources, or weren't there to match the budget?
But we were in the red, yeah.
At a county level, they got communication, but it didn't happen. So we had to go there and, we fired Kelly, or Kelly, Bobby that night, because, it was either fire the economic development or the director of, uh, visitation and parts to Knox County, or fire Bobby, so we fired him.
They never gave us the current monthly...
They're spending money they didn't have.
Exactly, exactly. But they approved the commissioner's approval, they approved the budget, but they never told us how much it's in there.
Anyway, so that's what happened on that deal, but, anyway, Mark's in our, uh, administrative reports, is he ready?
Um, very busy, I'm usually busy. Uh, just a couple of things, stamps are going up five cents a piece on Sunday, so I ordered two thousand envelopes that we use to send out our bills, saving us a hundred bucks on the next, um, week, time we need them. So I went ahead and ordered them, although we had just about seven hundred left. Also, um, the inspector that inspected the pool, everything has been fulfilled that she left us with. I purchased everything we needed for the first aid kit, and Dustin has put the lock on the gate of pool. It had to be a lock that when you open the gate and you shut it, it automatically locked, it has to be open. That's been done and taken care of. Um, I got a call today from, uh, the corporate company for CHS. Um, I did send, um, a gift box cell phone number to them. They're upset that we dug a ditch on their property just behind Omaha Street. Uh, there's a drainage ditch there, and it's on their property. Uh, they don't seem to be as upset about that, it's there as the fact that nobody asked them about it or inquired of it. And they also need to know if we needed easement and who the easement should go for. So, um, it's just one of things we need to follow up on and, um, talk to the people.
CHS people?
CHS owns that property with the venture, so. And mostly she seemed upset that they haven't been asked for toll or advice on what we're gonna do.
Is that, is that the...
I, I don't know this is, but I'm sure that someone from CHS was...
Oh, sure.
...for permission, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, because I had to, I'm sure she was being, it was all pre-approved, you know, for the, but they know. If there's something you can do, feel alive or...
I think it was maybe a manager or like an administrator or somebody, but I think maybe somebody that had authority, gave the permission, and then this person maybe didn't, I'm not sure.
She asked me who the property owner was, and I, I told her the property owners, um, uh, named, so that maybe they'll be able to follow up with it that way too. So I got her calmed down, I'm kinda good at that, so, uh, she was pretty upset, but I got her calmed down. Told her we'd look into it and see what happened, and that we were sorry if any oversight had been done, and that, well, we'll get to the bottom of it, so.
So the...
And I'm not lying, we're doing it.
The whole... The whole community is better because that's... Hundred percent?
Yes, yes.
Hundred, yeah, I reckon it's a hundred percent better.
Even their property.
Yeah, the, the whole thing is, the water's getting, obviously, it's so much better, it's unbelievable, yeah.
So CHS called or somebody else?
Uh, CHS, she was, uh, I have it written down, she was a corporate, she said she called from, so.
I had a phone call from Johnson that does, uh, sewer cameras and stuff. He informed me that we have, uh, six to seven terrible sewer lines. We're getting so much water, and we're doing terrible. The ones that he concerned about is the one that's, uh, I don't know what street that is down there by where I'm working there?
East Fort.
East Fort, if, if they were there today, they had to find a manhole, and then Dave told me they found a manhole. But there's six or seven that are worse than anything in town, so they asked me if it would be permissible to do them, because we're getting them next month in August, they're coming up here to do three of them that we approved, that COVID money. They asked me if we could go ahead and do those terrible ones, they just camera the rest of the town down there. And we, I said, we might as well take care of them, and he said, we're gonna get put on schedule for next year to do the other three as we can afford, I think about fifty thousand dollars. And I think that's what this, I don't know if this is, uh, this estimate, you gotta be, I don't know where that came from or what that's on. So they're gonna come and, they camera up today, because I was working down there, and they, they were looking to see how bad they are, and they are terrible, so they said, you got more water coming in than you've ever seen there, so. That's what I had on that.
So that's the, the sewer pipes are bad enough where groundwater's getting into our sewer, and water adding to the ground.
Did we already approve that, that they could go and do that, or is it...
We approved that the three streets were gonna be taken care of, and Colorado was one of them, but these obviously now, under, under Lee's camera, we're postponing those and doing what's urgent.
But they will put us on schedule for next year, do those other three, so they can get the worst ones done this year or next year, so.
Anything else, Tom?
No, that's it.
So we have head of maintenance?
That's all.
We're working, did amazing, good things, we obviously have the M race coming up, so we'll do everything we can to spit, polish, and shine, and...
Uh, we have those city signs somewhere, I know I said I put those up, I get ahold of my phone, are we doing, did everybody have much of city replacement signs?
Street signs are business stall.
Ones that we have, have been put up.
Well, then we need to work some more, I mean, that yield tree up by your inlet, Denver, completely, major call on it.
Okay.
Um...
And then I, and Dustin and I talked the other day about, on the end of Wyoming and Colorado, to put, whatever they put, no exit or whatever, they, they had a street sign down there, because we get a lot of traffic.
You know, I, yeah, I do, that kind of kind of look at the baseball field, or the football field, these two lights, they just don't lie, I mean, I can get to it.
And Dustin had...
Stop them.
Okay, Dustin...
No outlets, a good...
Right, no outlet, Dustin did think there was some, he had, knew we talked about our, but didn't, they had seen those signs, but he was a couple of, but a yield sign, right? So what was it saying?
We should maybe look at ordering some other sanders on top.
Children at play signs? Children at play signs?
Children at play, I mean?
Like, children playing, the signs that say to, like, slow?
Do we have any?
I don't know if that's something that you have in this town or not, but...
I don't, I don't think we do.
I don't think we even know about that.
I love Sharon Street, but Ted Carriage shoots kids' paint up street all day long.
Can you speak, bump, some of you?
Well, thank you. Um, we gotta, they wanna have three sets instead of two, is the deal, so, um, and I measured the street, the street's thirty-four foot. We can buy it, it's a lot less, it's less money even with three sections than the original plan, that's why I was gonna ask you, then, Jason. If you put ten-foot sections, that takes up ten, twenty foot of thirty-four, at least, uh, what, fourteen foot where you can leave a little space here, a little space there. We're always gonna have one wheel, it's just speed bump, if that's okay with you, I would go and do this. Get those six, ten quarters and put it over there. And then what I had, and that's the other thing, we had Bryce and Matt, who were... And then, what I had, and that's the other thing, we had Bryce and that group of people on the west end of Sharon Street, cause that's where they're mostly kids are, cause they're able when you want them. I said, include people on Sharon Street, well, three people on Sharon Street, I've got to talk to on the east end, and there are, there's a daycare there, so I just don't know how you all wanna do that, but one on the east end, even because it's only two blocks, and two on the west end, can cover the rest of it, and we'll just call that good. I could sell.
Are they the same ones that are in the school?
Similar, yep, similar.
My best, they're both, yep.
Yep.
It did take a while.
I'll take that another time, but if that's what the kid, we will, plan one on the east, that east two block run right there, and then put two on the other side, and space them also. No, you already blew, I just wanted to make sure that's. Thank you, Jason, for your help. Uh, don't worry about it. You weigh the long hat.
Well done, Sharon Street, uh, we were able to get all of our vacant lots going this week, they look a lot better. And I want to thank all the owners for cooperating, they're doing it very fast. And then, um, we were by the, by the ballpark, baseball park, there, on one of the intersections, there were a whole bunch of trees hanging over the roof. And I met with the owner, and he agreed to cut four trees down, so we can see better. And then he called Donna the other day, they cut every one of them down, so you can see real good now.
Right on Riceburg?
Riceburg, oh, yeah, but he removed every one of them, so it looks a lot better now. And then Saturday, we picked up a dog at the pool. And unfortunately, we still have that dog. We found a foster person that was taking care of it at no cost to see right now, but they're not sure if they wanna keep the dog. I called Bloomfield, and Bloomfield first told me that they did not do it, they did not take it. But then they called Clark back later, and said they would do it at twenty-five dollars a day, but then, was it twenty-five dollars?
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars, uh, a license that they had, that, they would, it was eighty dollars, we had to pay forty dollars for that, and they would take the dog.
How about community society? How about community society, you?
They won't take them. We called everybody, we're gonna take the dog. We've had it, it's on Facebook, it's everywhere, nobody's claiming it, so I don't think anybody's gonna claim it. As you know.
You didn't walk up and just start.
Do you have a gun?
Did.
The hardest thing there is to put it down.
What do we have to do about Martin Bell's? I'm hearing a lot of people shooting what, uh, um.
Well, very, very nice, no.
What, what, tell us about what, how is the dog, would temporarily have mine?
Where?
Yeah.
What you have in mind?
What do you have mine for the dog? Because obviously, when you, if you get a Martin Dog, and it got to the building eleven thirty at night, you gotta go up, pick up a dog on the street, what are you gonna do if they decide to put it back in the truck, or?
That's the problem, we have no, apparently, everybody said there was that one time, there was a couple kennels at the shop up there, but they're not there, and nobody knows where they went.
You can have mine.
Okay.
It needs to be big, we, we, um.
Yeah, well, I don't care, right?
It's a six, my, I think by.
Yep, four.
Perfect, perfect.
There you go, kennel. Now, you put a tarp on the top of it, and keep it posted, roll a little water in there for eagle, cause that's what was there before, was that kennel.
Okay, on this Bloomfield, are we gonna?
Wait, yeah, what do you wanna do with the dog?
Cause I, like I said, the person that's fostering it right now, not just, they're not necessarily thinking they want it. They may want it, they may not want it.
Will you euthanize it all? Is that a thing?
That's what Bloomfield does after, um, five to seven days. For five to seven days, you try to find the owner. They can't, they'll try to get an animal shelter taken, if they don't, they euthanize it.
It's really, uh, this shouldn't be a city property, city, I mean, somebody, they won't claim it. We should have, we should have to pay the vet to keep it there.
For five to seven days.
That's your decision what you wanna do, I don't. But I don't think we wanna, if I pick up a dog, I don't think we wanna take and give, kill it.
No, I think if you pick up a dog, you keep it for a few days, seven days, and after that day, then it's, all right, buddy.
How many, how many dogs?
Pardon?
How many, how many dogs can I want to have?
Three, if, if they have more than three, they have, they have a kennel license.
What's a kennel license?
Kennel license, you've got a certain, you've got to meet certain criteria, that the neighbors on both sides, you have to approve it, and then there's certain things that's gotta be inspected.
Some neighbors on Omaha Street are pretty pissed off, I don't know. Man, they're pissed off, dreadful, by the, uh, street. People are less, the guy down there, we got one, Martin Bell's house.
Do you want, I've met, I've already met one?
I don't know which, who you met, I ain't made no name, but there's, you just gotta drive out there, and you're there, boy.
Have the owners been informed of the parking dogs?
You what?
Have the owners of the dogs been informed?
Well, I think you met with a few.
If that's one they talked about, I met with twice. And I've talked to other neighbors, and nobody says, I don't hear nothing, so I don't know what to do.
Some people say they don't hear the dogs, or people complain about the dogs?
So. The people that are complaining, you have them recorded with a phone or some device.
You know, when they take the five gallon bucket of water.
When you call the sheriff's office and make that complaint, that's what they'll tell you to do. Just, just record it with your phone.
I talked to Sheriff's Department, they don't pick up the dog, period.
No, they don't, but if you have it recorded on your phone, that's proof that their dogs are being used.
And it's time to record it with them, so.
You mean the sound of the dog?
Yep.
Oh, well, you could just take a video.
You can take a video, yeah, yeah.
Of the dog, what'd you say, what were you saying there?
One lady, they five ounce, five gallon bucket of water out there, throws it at the dogs, it's that bad, it's a lot.
Well, these people are gonna have to call me when they're barking.
Yeah.
Cause there's not much I can do if I.
I don't know if you wanna get.
Or the people need to.
I don't know if you wanna get woke up at three o'clock in the morning.
I don't, it don't matter to me.
Well, the person that's complaining needs to record on their phone, the dog's barking.
But, so you pick up a dog and take it to move, they'll run this room again?
It's gonna cost them twenty-five dollars a day.
Shouldn't they keep it for seven?
When they're five to seven days. But we have, they didn't have to get a license to be able to do it, and that costs them eighty dollars, and they said they would split it.
A license to euthanize the dog?
No, just keep the dog.
Like, it's a yearly thing, we, we share their license to have this.
It's like a dog.
This capability.
But after the five to seven days, if nobody claims that dog, they can potentially.
They will, they will euthanize it?
Or, at our expense, or just?
Their expense.
Okay.
But we can, we can keep the dog for five to seven days here for nothing.
Yeah, we have a code.
Just take.
And then just take it over there.
Or will they keep it an additional five to seven days before they can, do they have to have it in their possession? Five to seven days before they can euthanize it, or we can take it over there and say, get rid of it, free of charge, move?
Well, you can probably get euthanized here.
In all this euthanized dog?
Huh?
What about Arved? I'll call, I'll call.
The vet here, he did one. The vet here put light on it.
So we keep it in the city somewhere for seven days and then take it to Arved?
Arved, yeah, yeah.
Where?
What?
Yes.
They went down with the tree.
This guy is very heavy. She's talked wrong. That, that house is gonna be burning in the next two years.
And I met with a guy on Harold Street a couple times, I tried to visit him, he was in an apartment, and I was picking him up.
Ain't making no heavy waves with him, yeah?
No.
That place is gonna have to burn down before he even goes out.
Be nicer if you come to the door with clothes on, you know?
Absolutely. They're pretty tired, aren't they?
Okay.
Are you talking about?
No, I'm talking to our court, our court, for instance, there's a man with no clothes on every time he goes there. Actually, this time we asked him nicely to get off his porch.
Usually works. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Uh, important man, man, who manager, they're needy, and, uh, training lessons, they're doing really well. The other day, they had a quick report, people are ready to sign a list in the pool, it's gonna get, have nothing other than, uh, about their parents, whatever, good. Family environment has been the common that they got, and people feel comfortable there, so that part of it's really good. Encouraging more and more families to use tonight, the Thursday night, opportunity for family to open swim field, so, I don't know, if you heard anything else, just be sure to let me know, I think.
August first, they're planning a movie night at the pool, so they're going to have a family night with, uh, showing a movie, she's playing a bat.
For school, they're good, I think.
And then on July, twenty, oh, twenty-first, uh, the school is having something in their north part of, whole ball thing in the park, kind of an event that, they're doing all the liability insurance and all that kind of stuff, but it's just somewhere where the most community back in the pool. So I asked the pool, like, the vaulters and the exhibitors, the water, using the pool bathroom. They won't go into the pool, of course, that's a mutual, kind of an agreement deal, they're gonna access the bathroom. And they did play pickleball, and pickleball's good, but it's not good for the, me, but it's kind of, but anyway, so, I don't, we did have one, so you know we have, have one, maybe even a full day, maybe a happy, or we couldn't have pool because of the chemical imbalance. Lactate this time, like, look, we had set, so we're gonna gain six days of pool use by having proper management or better system or, or, in any case. So I'm really happy with that process of keeping pool for the community.
Disco hall, this time?
Oh, yeah, the disco set is here.
Good.
Larry and I picked it up, and we took our stuff to the, to the city dump, picked that up, we're in the process, uh, what day is that?
Seventeen?
July seventeenth, to make the leaders play, and when they play, I want them to go ahead and lay, leave something here to where, where they normally play, so that when we, we can mimic our model, whatever, use theirs as a model, to lay out the poles and put them together. We're gonna put the poles that, in the five gallon bucket of quick treat vinyl or whatever, and then fill it up with cement, and then we'll just drill nine holes in the drop of buckets, and then we're gonna get them all leveled up and put the baskets on them. I'm gonna ask some point kind of for a community night to help us keep that, I'll take them here, but I've secured a pole, soul digger, which is, it becomes real holes. Well, of course, after we get them initial marks, we'll have to get that, the, the digger timeline or something, that's, we don't go into a power line or something like that, but, so that's in the works, and, uh, they tentatively have added them to the league next year, so that they will play here often, and hopefully, a lot of teams, just want us. Jason, how, is it a person thing for this golf?
Or a sport?
Yeah, or whatever, but, you know, maybe you, young council people can join the disco, if you want, they have fun.
I'm sure they're involved.
But, so, whatever, this will be the key. All right. Okay, the next item is Turner's report, and, uh, I think very good standard, and it's a very, please, and Sean's always telling me, without hesitation, reservation, you have questions, just come and ask, cause she.
I have one, I have a dog, I'm out there, looking at the money, I just want to get a wave, to do CDs, CDs.
Did you see that?
I did, I did, was that, was that, was that what that was?
The one, she was five hundred thousand?
There's five different CDs for a thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what that was, I saw it, I was curious about it.
That's excellent, excellent.
There's enough now, she asked me the other day, and we went and looked, and scratched on the paper, there's enough, potentially for another hundred dollars, six dollars CD for the pool, so that money can start earning interest at five point five percent also, so, and we gave her the authority to do that, whatever we wanted to do on it, and she, yeah, so that'll be six hundred pounds.
And Larry, you said, even if we need that money, before the CD expires, that he, we would still be earning interest on the money, cause he would just turn it to two percent when we're getting five and a half off the CD, so, that's great. He would, or?
Or. I don't, do we have a meeting going for this session, does anybody have any, who, who's with us, not, let's go faster, uh, with the, the, the. Okay, so I guess the next item would be to establish, one we're gonna have the next, we're sorry, they're, obviously, what do you have, uh, Thursday meeting? Okay. Anything else with the?
Make a motion, Andrew?
Motion, maybe second? Heights? Miller?
Yes.
And Murphy? Ladies and gentlemen, who are your adjourners?
Good meeting, Bob.
I thank you all for the investment, not that I'm a corporate member of Bible, but that's great.